Oh, it is.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August first, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting. Anyone out here needs to find headphones, let us know. And sounds good. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, United States of America, and the Republic of China, our nation under God.
All right, Don, do a roll call, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bode is absent this evening, so Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt is also absent, so we'll move to Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Bode and Councilman Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
I move that we excuse Councilmember Bode and Councilmember Schmidt.
Second.
All right, this motion, second to excuse Councilmember Bode and Deputy Mayor Schmidt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, council, have any late changes to the agenda? City manager, do you have any late changes?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, have any board reports to share?
No board report. I just want to say I stopped up with works, working on some stuff on in the city today, cleaning some graffiti off the fences. So that was, I rolled my window down and gave him a high five. That's a, that just, that's a big job to keep that going, so just wanted to make sure about the first. Was, uh, Thanks for that.
Thank him for all the functions we had this weekend, too, getting everything out there and done, and streets blocked.
Yeah, I was gonna say this weekend, that was fun that they had that event on Third Street where they walked it off, then people could go down there and shop from other people. It's kind of neat.
Yep, right.
Yeah.
Anything else? I will be attending a Vietnam War Veterans Pining Ceremony at the VFW Friday at noon, and when any other council members would like to attend, so we can notify of a quorum.
I would.
Okay. Two, three, four, there's a quorum. All right.
We'll take care of that.
Okay. Any other council member board reports to share? All right, has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as published, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, we have two presentations and our first speaker is not here, so we will go to Liz Arbaugh. All right, Max, we're out of work.
Surprise.
Oh, anyway, I'm here for the second quarter lodging tax report for the museum. Next slide, please. So we are quarter two, we had six hundred and sixty-two visitors into the museum. Of those, what is that, seventy of them were from distances greater than, or from out of state or international. So I think that's not too bad. We are not seeing the international visitors that we've seen in the past since COVID, and I think now it's probably due to the strength of the dollar, you know, when people were planning vacations a few years ago, you know, like within the last year. But we have been very busy, both with people in the museum and people emailing for research and fielding questions from other organizations like the city sending us a man who wanted to bring his one hundred and three-year-old mother who used to live in Shelton here and was wondering where she lived. So that was interesting. We could, we could, we got it as close as Dayton because her mother was in the paper, but other than that, that was, that was it. So, and next slide, please. So we are, we have a pretty good traffic with our website. We are selling books. We have been helping a researcher from, oh, Missouri, who was doing a biography about Rusty Callow, who was a crew coach, who was from the Quilqualum area. And we're just, you know, helping a lot of people, and David Martin, who has done a lot of work using our stuff, is also going to be adding photos in his next book. And, and it's great for us because it, people see the book and then they go, oh, Mason County's got more stuff, and so then they come down, so I'm all for it. Next slide, please. We have a very busy Facebook page. It's really a lot of, it's a public engagement as opposed to probably bringing a lot of people in. But we are more than happy to have seventeen hundred people looking at a Facebook post. And a lot of this is due to a great volunteer we have who comes down from Tacoma once a month and schedules these posts. Next slide, please. We have also been using a volunteer to add sites to an app called Clio. She's working on putting the walking tour on it, and then I'm also encouraging her to reach out into the county, so she did the McCreeby House. And we'll see if we can get other, other sites on there, and there are other people doing this as well, which I think is kind of fun. But the, you know, it kind of an obscure app and still six hundred people have looked at it, so I think that's great. Just getting the heritage stuff out there into the community. Next slide, please. We are, continue to work on Omika, which is our site that's going to be carrying our photos and it, I have a new volunteer working on that. He's a college. He's a PLU student and it's, you know, for someone who's text savvy, he's still struggling with it a little bit, but we'll get there. Next slide, please. Our current exhibit is tangible prints and it is clothing from our collection. We have a couple of things that have been loaned to us now, but there's just some really, really incredible pieces that have been in a box for thirty years or something, so it's fun to bring them out. I washed them all, ironed them, so. So I encourage you to come in and see them. Next slide, please. Our next exhibit, which will be this fall sometime, will be the photos of Dennis Muir. He is still a local resident. He's probably in his seventies now. And he took a bunch of photos in the late sixties, early seventies, and he had, he has an amazing eye. It's, it's, it's really super fun. It's hard to tell from this, but that photo is of Heine's Broiler, and it, it is really, really cool when you can see it close up. So I'm really excited about this exhibit. Next slide, please. The car show is going to be returning on, this is wrong, that's actually August twenty-seventh, I believe, which is a Sunday. And it is in collaboration with the Shelton Downtown Merchants Association. So we shall see how that goes. It's been the primary fundraiser for twenty years, and this will be different, but I think it's going to be great. Amy Cooper is working like crazy on it, and we really appreciate her help. Next slide, please. So that's it. So any questions, comments?
Comments or questions?
I have a comment. I, I said that Deidre is, is that Heine's? Like, I thought it was. That was a dishwasher for three weeks.
Three whole weeks.
Three whole weeks, yes. So it's really fun to look at these pictures and things, because I grew up here, so.
Right, right, yeah, and you know, things have changed, but there's still a lot that's the same, and so you'll have to come. You might very well recognize people in some of these photographs, so.
My kids laughed when I told them that that my yearbook was in the museum. Mom's in the museum. It's fun.
Well, thank you very.
If you come across why we named Art Johnson Park, Art Johnson Park, let me know. I've, I've done a lot, a couple hours looking through the journal archives, and I can't find out why we did that, and looking at city paperwork. We're not sure if we bought it or if it was given to us either, so we're just kind of curious.
I'm not sure about that part, but I can tell you, because his nephew, I think, lives next door to the park.
Okay.
So I would need, that's just like coming to the top of my head, I would need to double check.
If you come across it.
But I'm pretty sure that, yeah, we can help you with that.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Leanne is not back with Cinco Rocks. We could probably add her later if she does come back, if that's okay with the rest of the council. If not, we'll move her to another meeting. She was very busy at her place of employment. All right. We're on to our business agenda. Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us about updating the fee schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We brought you the fee schedule for twenty twenty-three at the beginning of the year, but we found the need to bring to you some recommended changes to do a better job. We feel of recovering some costs in particular related to the animal shelter, so we're bringing you that for consideration. Those changes to the fee schedule are on page, beginning on page three. And then it came to my attention that on page twenty-one, where we have some miscellaneous water fees and charges, when we go back out to reconnect a water customer for non-payment, we charge twenty dollars. I guess it had appeared somewhere else, but it wasn't in the fee schedule. And we believe it needs to be in the fee schedule. It certainly doesn't totally recover the cost because we're pulling a water staff member off of another job, but I, I asked them, so what would be a case where we wouldn't charge that just because, you know, it said for non-payment, so if, if there's a repair necessary where we're shutting off the water, then we go back out and reconnect that. It doesn't happen often, but if there's a, an issue at a business or a residence where that needs to, to require, that requires city water staff to go out and shut it off, then we certainly charge in that instance. This is only for non-payment when, you know, at the, once that bill is paid at customer service, then we're radioing right out to have it turned on, so it's pulling somebody off to go and reconnect the water. So that's what that part is. So this is the update to the fee schedule that we're bringing you to be good stewards of the public dollar to make sure we're trying to recover the cost of providing these city services.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, do we, you must have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody in the audience? Right. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we forward resolution number one, two, seven, eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three, to the agenda on August fifteenth, for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion, a second to forward resolution number one, two, seven, eight, dash, zero, seven, two, three, to the actual agenda of August fifteenth for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, City Manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about.
Thank you, Mayor.
Title to the Shelton Municipal Code.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No, Deputy Mayor tonight, council members. So yes, before you tonight is approval of ordinance number two, zero, zero, nine, dash, oh, six, two, three, which amends title two of Shelton Municipal Code, and this edits these particular chapters to coincide with RCW thirty-five, eight, point one, three, point oh, eight, oh, which is the city manager powers and duties and other provisions. So again, this just kind of cleans up, if you will, some of, I think, the changes that were made when commission form of government changed the council manager form of government a couple of years ago.
All right. Donna, then what type of public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
The audience like to speak on this. All right. May we have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, zero, nine, dash, zero, six, two, three?
Yes, you may. Ordinance number two, zero, zero, nine, dash, zero, six, two, three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending title two of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to city officers and departments.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number two, zero, zero, nine, dash, zero, six, two, three, as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, zero, nine, dash, zero, six, two, three, as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, vote, post, motion carries. Right, we have another item, or City Manager.
Mayor. So tonight, I'm bringing forth resolution number one, two, seven, six, oh, six, two, three. And this is the establishment of a regional structure for decision-making related to fund allocation of opioid and opioid, opioid settlement funds that come passed through from the state of Washington through opioid settlements. So this is similar to the last agreement we had with the previous settlement funds the city received, and this is a requirement to receive those funds passed down by the state of Washington. So again, regional funding strategy for fund allocation, partnering with Mason County to receive those, receive those settlement funds. We are anticipating ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and two cents back for purposes related to opioid addiction and usually treatment prevention services.
Thank you. Donna, anyone side of public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody like to speak on this? I have a reading of resolution one, two, seven, six, dash, zero, six, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, seven, six, dash, zero, six, two, three. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between Cascade Pacific Action Alliance Region participating local governments.
Thank you, Donna. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, six, dash, zero, six, two, three.
Mayor, we don't have any motion just yet.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, six, dash, zero, six, two, three, as presented.
All right, comments or questions? Missed that one.
Mr. Mayor, who was the second on that? Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, six, dash, zero, six, two, three, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Manager, we'd like to bring up Leanne now.
Absolutely.
All right, come on up.
Do I start?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry. Hi, my name's Leanne Gunter, and I'm with PNW Raised Events. My business partner Laura Watson's here, just couldn't be here today. Sorry, I'm out of breath. This came from work. Um, we just had our Cinco Rocks event this last May. It's our annual parking lot party, and this year we requested some money from LTAC. And so I'm here to talk about that today. This slide right here just kind of shows what we do, just bullet points. We raise money for Saints Pantry. We've done it for six years now. We bring live music to downtown Shelton. We have a taco waiting contest, and then we have like two hundred plus attendance, and then usually a fun run. You can do the next slide. So this is basically our income and expenses this year. So it's, I'm coming right out of our Cinco years. We're trying to rebuild it back up to where it was before. This is our flyer right here that we had out, and you can look at the income versus expenses. We did a lot of radio ads, the journal. We went around town and put posters up. And yeah. And next slide. Thank you. We also had a second flyer that kind of showed more of what other things we had to offer. And then right over here, we have some pictures from this year. The bottom one is the taco waiting contest this year. You can see the stage in the background there. The two top ones are from years past. Just, it's a fun little event. Okay, next slide, please. So the top one right there is our logo for the Cinco Rocks event. I'm wearing one of our shirts right now. It's what we have for our merchandise. And then these are pictures of years past as well. When we did the fun run, it was really successful before COVID, so the bottom part is the fun run. The top part is showing some taco waiting contest participants as well. Next slide. Thank you for your support. Is there any questions?
Comments or questions? Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it?
Oh, my gosh.
Bye, thanks, Leanne.
Thank you. All right, Brett, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, for us tonight. Yeah, absolutely. Few items, note. As you'll know, we're fully into two thousand and twenty-four budget formulation. So departments have presented their requests for two thousand and twenty-four. And working based off of two thousand and twenty-three baseline budget, as you know, particularly in the general fund, there's some difficulties that we're facing right now, so it's, the key is going to be balancing those needs with the anticipated revenue. So Director Giddens and his staff within the finance department working really hard to reconcile year-to-date and projecting where we're going with revenue and, and expenditures moving forward. And there is a budget committee, council budget committee meeting scheduled for August eighth, so we'll further refine some of the levels of service standards, directions on where we're going to go as far as presenting options and alternatives to the entire council for those levels of service as we move through this process, and I believe it's an August twenty-second study session, right? Yeah, sounds right. Next week, the study sessions involved and important focuses on utility rates and GFCs for water and sewer. Received some preliminary information and a few discussions over the past week with FCS Group, who is a consultant performing those, those studies for us. As you remember, you saw the capital improvement programs for water and sewer last week, which is a basis of building those rates with operations combined with those CIP programs, so I hope to have a in-depth and lively discussion on how we move forward with those rates as we move through this year. It's important to identify those before two thousand and twenty-four comes, because there are no rates established for twenty, no additional rates established for two thousand and twenty-four. They would remain as they are now, which is taken prior to the first of the year. August fifteenth, the state auditor is joining us for an exit conference regarding the federal funds issued to the city. There was over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars issued through COVID relief funds, and so that triggers the audit. And we had an entrance interview just over a week ago. Exit interview is the fifteenth, so it's fairly quick audit and by all accounts, everything's great, so. Kudos to our finance staff for their work there. The RFP is out for animal shelter and animal control services. Director Hill is the contact for that project. So we are waiting for, James, is the deadline for that? If you remember, sorry to put on the spot. End of the month, so looking forward to that at the end of the month, and we'll have further information after that deadline. Today, we had the swearing-in of a new police officer, Tyler Peebles, sworn in this afternoon, so he is fresh out of the academy and goes right into field training, so we're happy to have Mr. Peebles on with us and look forward to him working through field training back on the streets here in a few months. Tourism, LTAC grants applications are open right now, so you saw two of the funding recipients here this year, just give presentations, and so those are due August thirty-first, so want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. And then Mayor announced the pending ceremony Fridays. That wraps up anything I have for you this evening.
All right, anyone have any comments or questions for City Manager? All right, this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Dean Jewett.
Morning. Dean Jewett, lifelong Shelton community member. Going to throw you some, some curveballs, some fastballs, and might even lob in a slow pitch. I, so I became aware of a situation that's going to occur Thursday morning at six o'clock in the morning in Brewer Park, where we're going to go do some cleanup. We're going to have some service people down there. I want to say thank you for all the people that were involved with that. Should be able to reach out and touch the people that need some services and clean up and get our park back. So I'm sure that that was no easy feat by any means. I'm sure that there's a lot of people in this room that had a big part of that, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I, also, on the heels of that, rumor is that they're going to be doing a big cleanup in the homeless camp up above the yacht club. So I guess what I would like to, to state on that, and to caveat onto that, they also just cleaned up two camps in Olympia, Tortilla Flats and Hamburger Hill, kind of by Hobby Lobby. So when that happens, where do those people go? Okay, they come south because we have the transit. They're going to go into your smaller communities. They're not going to go into your bigger communities. Also, with that being cleaning of the yacht club camp, then you know, you all know what's going to happen, is that's going to push people into the community, Teresa Johnson Trail, the library trail underneath the, the bridge by Sierra Pacific, underneath the bridge on Seventh Street. So if we can be proactive and we know what's going to go on with those and have people, maybe some service providers there, that we can kind of be a lookout and do some proactive with the law enforcement, looking for those. So one, we can help those individuals that want the help and the ones that don't, that aren't going to comply, well, they can go somewhere else and find that help. The, I do have some other concerns that I touched on last week or two weeks ago in dealing with Keote Village and the intakes and how those intakes are handled. I, I'm still kind of hoping that one of you guys would reach out, because obviously they have a lease on that property instead of purchasing, so I wonder what the cost of that would do to our budget. But when you brings people in and you do an intake and a questionnaire, and then you do a drug test with them, then those individuals that fail, that are not part of that community, where do they go? Deidre, do you know? Eric, do you know? They're let go in Mason County. So, I mean, that doesn't seem like something that we would want to have happen. I so the YMCA, we just sold a vacant piece of property up by the YMCA that was kind of put in for parking for the disc golf. So did we get full market value for that property? Just something I want to know. Is there a three-touch rule on that? Was it advertised? I didn't see it. So, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker via Zoom, Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Marinesco and fellow council members. My name is Colleen Carmichael, and I'm the Executive Director for Quixote Communities. I'm acting as the spokesperson for the agencies that serve the homeless population in Mason County. We wanted to update the council on recent discussions we have had relating to the encampment at Brewer Park. In the last several weeks, there have been a multi, multitude of meetings involving county, city, and businesses. Those discussions led to a meeting that we held this morning to create strategies. The executive directors and board chair of the following providers were present. Crossroads Housing, Youth Connections, Turning Point, Community Lifeline, and Quixote Communities. City Manager Mark Ziegler was also present. Outreach workers from Crossroads, Youth Connections, and Community Lifeline will be on-site this week to assess the needs of those who are without housing. We will use the data to create a plan identifying solutions as well as potential funding opportunities for unmet needs. Our plan will be presented to the county by City Manager Mark Ziegler and me next week. We have all committed to work together to resolve the crisis. On behalf of our agencies, we would, we would like to caution those people who are well-meaning and want to go to the site to offer help. While we appreciate your gestures, we need to identify our participants and start forming relationships with them. We have experienced professional staff who are needed to build trust and gain access to information that can lead to reduction of people in the park. Those in the public that do not work for our agencies may do more harm than good by confusing people in the park when they show up. Please respect our agencies and let us do the work. The best way you can support the people who are in the park is to contribute funds to any one of the agencies involved in serving them. On behalf of our agencies, we would also like to recognize the work of Community Lifeline's Board Chair, Chris Brickard, for her unwavering For her unwavering commitment to the unhoused. She's an incredible person who has volunteered her time and energy. To making sure people living on the streets continue to be served while Community Lifeline creates a path forward. She deserves to be recognized for her efforts. Thank you, Chris, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And again, if anyone asks questions about Quixote Communities and the process that we use to put people on site, they should contact myself directly. Or they can contact Mason County, or they can contact Tanya over at Crossroads because we're the three people involved in that. And I think it's better to have facts than misinformation so people don't get scared. Thank you.
Right, anyone else, Donna?
That's all that we have, Mr. Mayor.
Does the council have any new items for discussion? All right, our next meeting is Tuesday, August fifteenth at six PM. We also have a study session. Tuesday, August eighth at six PM. This meeting is adjourned at six.